All right, good evening everyone, welcome. Thank you for attending this evening. This is the special meeting of the Salem City Council for April 2nd, 2012. We'll call to order and we'll have the roll call and then the pledge of allegiance. Would you please read the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler? Absent. Counselor Nanki? Absent. Counselor Clausen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson? Here. Thank you, will you please join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Rich, would you please? Thank you. Oh, oh, the agenda, not the game.
It's not the game. I'm very tempted, but it's not.
Thank you.
The game.
Thank you. And welcome Counselor Tesler.
Thank you.
All right. We will open the meeting with the approval of the special meeting agenda. Counselor Bennett, do you have a comment for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda for Salem City Council for April 2nd, 2012.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. We have time for public comment and we have an individual who has signed up. David Engen?
Engen.
Am I saying your name correctly? Welcome.
Thank you. Well, ma'am, my name is Engen, E-N-G-E-N. I've been down there many times, mostly prior to your...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. You'll need to speak into the... whichever one is live there. If you'll give your name and address or your ward, please. And you have three minutes and after two minutes an amber light and at the end of three a red light. Welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My name is David Engen, 1145 14th Street Northeast, Salem, Oregon, Ward 1. And I just came down today because I went over to the League of Oregon Cities the other day and I picked up some information. And it was a survey that was sent out in 2006, elected official stipends and benefits to all the cities in Oregon that have city councils. And there's a lot of really interesting information in it. Fifty-seven percent of the cities returned these, Salem didn't. And I want to know why Salem didn't return this information. It's my belief that the more information people know about their governments, the more we have a democracy and the better off we all are. And I kind of am interested in finding out why Salem did not return the survey to the League of Oregon Cities. After all, one of your members on the city council is a member of the board.
Exactly.
Of the League of Oregon Cities. Is it possible to find out why we didn't return this survey? It's a very simple survey.
And when was the survey conducted?
It was sent out in 2006.
I don't know.
Prior to many of your times, I know that, but I'm kind of interested in finding out what happened.
Thank you. And we generally do respond to surveys. I'm sorry, back in 2006, I don't recall it and don't really have any information about why it wasn't. But we, depending on staff time, we do send those back. So I'm assuming it was just we didn't have any staff, you know, available for that project at that time.
Well, in answer to that, I'm not going to contradict you, but I know that it would have been very easy for anybody, almost anybody on the staff, to do this in a few minutes and send it back.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just not aware of in 2006 what happened with that particular survey.
And if you, and if you, if the city gets this, it's quite interesting. There's a lot of information in here about the different cities in Oregon, the ones that answered the survey. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We are active members in good standing of League of Oregon Cities, so we will get a copy of that. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. Engen knows this, but just for the record, city councilors in Salem do not receive a stipend. We do every once in a while, when we're meeting during a meal hour, get a meal. And that would be the extent of it. We get no travel expenses for coming, for any of our activities. So I, I think it's important that at least that be on the record.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that it's not just about a stipend either. Some of these cities cover health care, workers' compensation, and a lot of other things, training, and sending people to the city meetings, things like that, which are very important, I think. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We will get a copy of that. Thank you. All right. We have an action item. We actually have a resolution and then we have interviews this evening. The resolution will just take a moment. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to accept the staff recommendation for resolution number 2012-24. Is there, is there a question or comments? We'll move for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now conduct the interviews and elect a candidate for the Ward 7 council vacancy. And I believe that we have in front of us some ballots. Do we have, is there any sort of a staff comment or we simply will go right to our interviews? All right. You can tell, welcome ladies, I'm glad you're both here. You can tell that I've never done this before and maybe you've never done this before. So please don't be nervous. And I guess I just have to ask, do we have a formality as to who goes first or how we conduct this?
Mayor, usually what happens is each counselor will be asked to ask a question and you would ask one candidate first and then the next question would go, the second candidate would be first, so that each of them have a chance to answer all questions.
Okay. Would either of you like to start with just a personal statement?
And you can move the microphones down right in front of you.
Yeah, you can pull those around.
Right over to your mom.
Yeah, there you go.
You're right, I haven't done this before.
Can you hear me?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for this opportunity.
Oh, can you speak right in? I'm not sure it's live.
Sorry.
Is it live?
I think so. Yes, thank you. Okay, I won't move. I have a hard time not moving when I talk, so.
And so, first of all, we need you to please tell us how to properly pronounce your name.
My name is pronounced Sharon Blasey.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you about why I'm so excited for this opportunity. I think I have a very diverse educational and professional background that would make me an ideal fit for the city council. And again, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I need to stop moving.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Sally Cook and I was born here in Salem, so I've been a lifelong resident here. And I just wanted to thank the city for all of the things that you do and thank you for this opportunity to come and be a part of what you're doing here. I look forward to having a chance to answer your questions and thank you.
Thank you, welcome both. All right, Counselor Bennett, I see your hand up.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll start the questions. One of the, and I'll ask you both, if I may, pardon me. One of the real challenges of serving on the city council is the time commitment. It requires you to attend these meetings and this is sort of the tip of the iceberg. You will also be representing a ward that has a couple of neighborhood associations that meet at least once a month. You'll be on council committees that require a specific amount of time. We'll follow this meeting with an hour or so work session on housing authority business. There's just a variety of those kinds. Can you talk a little about your time availability? I think the estimate that I have most commonly used is this takes about 20 or 30 hours a week in addition to whatever else you do. And so I'd like to hear you about your availability to provide service to the constituencies. Go ahead Sally, you go first.
No problem. Thank you, thank you Chuck. So as far as time commitment, I have so much availability. I have a two-year-old, so I work Saturdays and Sundays part-time, Monday through Friday. I have story time as my main agenda at the library and a few other playdates scheduled here and there, but I shouldn't have any problem making meetings. Before even applying for the position, I checked with my husband to make sure childcare would be coverable. We have my parents, his parents, backup babysitters. We shouldn't have any problem time commitment-wise. In addition to the neighborhood association meeting that I already attend for Sunny Slope and I understand with Ward 7, there's another neighborhood as well, that shouldn't be a problem. And with the garden work that I've been doing, we tend to have meetings about once a month, but because of the nature of my job, it's very easy for me through business hours to be able to have time to call people, to attend meetings, to work things out. So I would love to have a time commitment with the council.
Thank you.
To answer your question, the time commit would not be an issue for me. I have a very flexible work schedule. I do work full-time for the Secretary of State Audit Division, however, that is very flexible. I do have my evenings available. I also have Fridays available and weekends are very open. I am on another board, but that has not taken a lot of my time. And what it has shown me is I really have a passion and a desire to be more involved in the community. And so for me, the time, the time commitment would be a priority. I would make it a priority and that's, and that's why I applied. And I do want to give back to the community and I want to make this a priority and that's what I would do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for showing up and stepping up to the plate to serve. It's, it's great to see folks want to do that. The, a lot of us became involved in city things and by being involved in our local neighborhood, our block party or just being involved in the neighborhood association or just with a group of folks where you live. Can you describe for us any involvement or all of your involvement that you've had with your neighbors in wanting to serve the city?
Well, I do have to admit, I have not been involved with my local neighborhood association to the extent that I would have liked to have until now. My time has been spent, I would say, more within the city of Salem itself as a whole. If I were given this opportunity, I would certainly make that a priority to be more involved, obviously, I mean, that would be a requirement. But I, I think it's important for you to understand that the time that I've spent, I think, has benefited the city as a whole. You know, I mentioned I am involved with a nonprofit and, and that nonprofit organization has had a dramatic impact on the communities here in Salem. You know, I'm involved with a nonprofit that throws birthday parties for homeless children here in Salem. And, you know, we've only been doing this for about eight months and the impact that we have had in Salem as a whole has just been, has been phenomenal. I mean, we've, we've learned that people want to be involved in their community and I think that, you know, would apply directly to the question that you're asking. You know, we've seen, even out in, in my ward, we've seen the involvement of the schools that have gotten involved. You know, and it hasn't been just about a group of women going out and hosting birthday parties. We have actively engaged the city of Salem. We have partnered with the Salem Kaiser School District to identify children with needs. You know, we are working in a couple of shelters. And so, you know, I think that the work that I've, you know, I've done in the community has, has had an impact on Salem as a whole. And I'm also involved with Courthouse Square issues, so, serving on the Citizens Task Force for that. So, again, not directly in my, you know, Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, but, you know, being very actively involved with the decision-making and what's going on with Courthouse Square in downtown Salem does have a dramatic impact. You know, there are issues related to transportation. You know, one of the biggest challenges we have right now is what to do with the bus transfer center, you know, and that has an impact on my neighborhood. So I think that that's given me a lot of insight into areas that are, you know, are of a concern in the neighborhood, so. Thank you.
Other counselors?
Sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Give you a chance too.
No problem. Well, from someone that, I grew up in South Salem and so I remember walking on Kubler Road before Kubler was there, you know, all kinds of, yeah. So my involvement with the city, being a product of Liberty, Juts and Sprague, you know, coming up through, I was involved in volunteer committees and church things, but never really anything city-wide. As a child, my mom brought me to the library. My mom did, you know, swim lessons with the Y. And I was involved in the community with Parks and Rec programs in the summer and to the extent that my parents got me involved. But as a young adult, and especially once I got married, we moved out south, bought a house and once we had a kid, that's really when my eyes started opening. As I mentioned, my daughter's two. And we live close to Sunny Slope Park, which through the park, I found out about more community involvement, started meeting my neighbors. One of the main reasons we bought our house was because of our neighbors. Retired or young couples, people living on the street, working, great neighborhood. And we just started talking with the neighbors and I found out about the Neighborhood Association, started going to meetings, found out about the park grants. Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association recently applied for the SPIF grant through the city. It was awarded, so we have money to improve Sunny Slope Park. And that's just really neat because one of the people on the Neighborhood Association was on the original park making crew in the 70s. So we have photos of him putting in the park benches and whatnot. It's really neat. But getting to know these people, it got me a little further involved because I think the natural progression is you just take, you use the system and you don't really recognize why it's there. And then you start to recognize the systems there and you're using it again. And you start to think, well, somebody should do this, somebody should do that. And that's where I was with the garden. I was really trying to talk somebody into making those two strips of land on South Liberty into community garden. I thought it would be a great idea. And one day it hit me, well, why not me? Somebody's not going to step up to do it, why don't I do it if I have that passion and I have that time? And that's how it started. And through that, I learned so much with the Neighborhood Association meeting with the city. Just a wonderful bunch of people that are underappreciated to a large extent, but are happy to show people the ropes, that are happy to say, look, here's what we need to make this happen. We haven't had, we haven't had, I think, the vision because people get so busy, they get so caught up. But I know people in our neighborhood would be happy to be a part. Once it's there, they're happy to sign up for the playground work day to help move the bark dust, to help get the playground equipment there. We recently lost one of our bus lines with, I guess it wasn't that recent, but it was still sad. So we see people now from other neighborhoods waiting on the Liberty Stop for the number eight. I don't know, I just, in being involved in the neighborhood and being involved in the community, I guess my big statement would be, I thought when I was younger that you needed to go out to make an impact. I thought you'd need to go to Portland, I thought you'd need to do something big, but it's kind of come full circle. I think that the biggest impact can be made in your neighborhood and can be made locally. And that's, I'm sure you've all figured that out because you're all here. It's profound for me to realize that, that something that seemed so, seems so small can have such a big impact for people in their homes, in their schools, in the community. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Tesler and then Counselor Dickey.
Hi there, thanks for coming down tonight. Probably not the most fun thing to do is sit there and have people stare at you. So, you know, here you see before you pretty much the full complement of people involved in the decision-making process. We're missing two of our members tonight. But I was curious what your, your respective backgrounds are, working with a group, working towards consensus? What do you do when people disagree? Just kind of your, your perspective on group dynamics and making decisions as a body? And I don't know, did you go first last time?
I did.
Okay. So I guess you're up to bat first.
Well, as far as making decisions in a group on a formal level, within churches, I've served on committees and boards, also within volunteer organizations, which I love to say that nonprofits attract really passionate people. And so a lot of times within nonprofits, you can have very strong disagreements where you're not sure where it's headed. And certainly my experience as far as conflict resolution, we all know how to resolve conflict, but sometimes you have to make a decision and that doesn't mean that conflict will be eliminated. I think especially with the city and with council, it's important to make decisions, even if that means that there's not a consensus 100% of the time. Ideally, that would be the case and it's important to get information and if there's a reason that there's, if the reason for consensus is lack of information, then definitely it's important to find out more. But in understanding that you have to move forward, recognizing sometimes you may need to change your opinion to be able to move. If you're doing a tug-of-war, nobody moves, but if you agree to go the same direction, everybody can move forward. So, I don't know. I think especially having a toddler, you can see the toddler behaviors in adults that come through at various times. And I recognize that a lot more in people that I deal with day-to-day and I kind of handle it the same way that I do with my daughter, where you present choices and, okay, here are our choices, let's move on. That's what I would say.
That's a really good question. In my work as a performance auditor for the Secretary of State Audit Division, I am confronted with that regularly. What we, when we conduct a performance audit, we go out to an agency and we come in from the outside and we tell an agency or a program how we think they should do it differently. And, you know, and that doesn't always go over so well. However, there is a real art to how you do that. And I pride myself in having perfected that skill. You know, we, we will go out and we will evaluate, say for example, the state's foster care program. And, you know, we're looking for ways that they can improve services or, you know, benefits to families who are providing foster care. And we are tasked with identifying ways in which an entire program that affects, affects, you know, thousands of people in the state, we are tasked with finding a way to tell them how they can operate more efficiently and more effectively. And, you know, and sometimes that's, that's hard for people to hear, that there are different ways to do things. But, you know, my job as a performance auditor is to identify working solutions on how an entire program, you know, whether it's Willamette ESD or the State Hospital, which I've audited, or Capital Construction, how you go to an agency director and then how you go to the legislature, which I've done that several times, and how you present what you've found. And in the way that I do that in my professional career is, you know, it's based on, you know, an evaluation on whether or not they're achieving, you know, their, their mission, they're providing the services, are they working within a budget? But we also look at best practices. We look at other states. And so, you know, we're identifying ways that they can make improvements. And, and if you work through with the person that you have to make, you know, that you have to have that conversation with in the end, if you work with them throughout the process, you know, and that's what's so key, is working together throughout the process. Yes, I go out and I audit, you know, an agency and a program, but during that six months or nine months or however long it takes, I'm working very closely with them and I have a team. And, you know, and my philosophy for my teams is we communicate, we're constantly communicating. And I think that that's what I would bring to the city council is that ability to, you know, continually communicate with others, you know, regardless of if there's, you know, a slightly differing of ideas, but really listening to where that's coming from, you know. I know, I know for sure I'm not, you know, I'm not always right. I'm tasked with identifying, you know, ways, ways that programs and agencies can be more efficient and they can be more effective, but it doesn't mean that, you know, we're always right and we need to be, we have to listen to each other. On another level, you know, I have served on two boards actively. I've served on the Habitat for Humanity Board up in Kitsap County in Washington and the board that I was describing here in Salem. And, you know, you're exactly right, there's, oftentimes there are differing approaches and differing opinions, but we all are working towards the same goal. You know, in the nonprofit that I'm serving on right now, you know, we're working towards the goal of improving the lives of homeless children in Salem. And that's the bottom line and that's what it comes down to. And our board meets regularly and we have these fundamental discussions and, you know, and there's a little differing of opinion, but we're all very, you know, professional adults and we are able to, to talk through those differences. And so I think I, you know, I have a lot of experience in, you know, how to handle that, how to handle it professionally and be respectful, so.
Counselor Dickey? I think, Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both for coming down. I'm really impressed with your volunteer experience, both of you, just kind of really unique, different things, so that's pretty neat. I think I have an easy question for you, to kind of go along with Counselor Bennett's question, just to be really clear. So we have a primary election coming up in May and there are some people that are running for this position. So I just want to make sure you understand you would be prepared to serve until January when the person who is elected in May would be sworn in.
Is that, so the, yes, I do understand that. And that being said, I would like to be very actively involved. I would like to make a difference in that amount of time and, and I hope that there are, you know, that there are opportunities to do that. You know, if there are specific committees or work that needs to be done in the next several months, you know, through January, you know, I don't want to just come to the meetings and, and vote or I want to be very actively involved. I have a lot of background, you know, in, in the budget process. You know, I fully understand the budget process and, and the decisions that go into that. And I'm very aware of things such as land use issues, you know, through the work that I've done for the state. So, you know, that's, that's a really good question. So the answer is yes, I'm very aware of that, but I would also like to, to take advantage of that, that time and make a difference.
Yes, I understand the time commitment. It's not a problem. I'm happy to serve.
And I'm very aware of things such as land use issues, you know, through the work that I've done for the state. So, you know, that's a really good question. So, the answer is yes, I'm very aware of that. But I would also like to take advantage of that time and make a difference.
Yes, I understand the time commitment. It's not a problem. I'm happy to serve.
Counselor Tess, Counselor Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. My question, since I am a human services type of person, so I deal a lot with people, you know, directly. So, my question is, in being a counselor with an ever-changing and growing population, we deal with a lot of folks from diverse backgrounds, as well as cultural differences. So, what is your experience or involvement in working with these groups? And how would you use your position to make effective changes for these folks?
Thank you. That's an excellent question, Counselor. My experience with diverse groups within Salem definitely stands from being involved in the community. I've been involved with the Gallagher's Fitness Resources with their women's clinic, where I've met a large number of women from all kinds of backgrounds. In my previous job, where I worked downtown, I had contact with the daily public, with Public Daily, all kinds of at-risk, high-risk people. That is really where my passion is. When I was volunteering up in Portland, I volunteered with at-risk homeless youth, or with people in high-risk communities. My family's in education, so we're very involved as far as the schools, to the best extent that we can be. You can't, I think you have to focus, but I have that background as far as making sure that when I need to go help set up a classroom, when I need to volunteer in a classroom, when we do lectures. I've traveled to do volunteering outside of Oregon. It's weird, because you asked me that question, and now I'm thinking of all this diverse volunteering that I've done outside of Salem. So, inside Salem, inside Salem, working across socioeconomic lines would really be the big one. So, making sure to volunteer with, you know, the soup kitchen downtown, making sure to volunteer with Table of Plenty through Westminster with Queen of Peace, making sure to be involved at Liberty with kids of all ages. Because I feel like, I know I have one age as far as children, but I also feel like I need to look ahead. So, I want to see what's going on, even though she's not there yet. I want to know what's going on in elementary schools, junior highs, high schools, because it'll be there soon enough. We have friends that, from the family, that teach, that have been involved with Shemeketa, have been involved in these different areas. And those points within the city bring a large diversity. I guess that would be where you'd get the most contact. I've met moms at Storytime that, you know, some have PhDs, some haven't finished high school, some, you know, are struggling to be able to meet their bills, others are doing just fine. But they're all there. Same with the women's clinic, people retired, people, you know, hurrying to get out of work to get there. So, just keeping my eyes open and my contact as I move throughout life, to be able to see those people and to be able to recognize them, to be able to acknowledge where they are. So, I apologize in the beginning, I'm telling you all about all these other cities, but in Salem, that's what I'm doing here, so.
So, working for the Secretary of State for the last 11 years as a performance auditor, you know, when we do performance audit, we're not just looking at a budget, but that, you know, that's a starting place, and so that's given me a lot of insight into budget development. But one of the, one of the things that I really, really love about what I do and why I keep doing it is every audit is different. And almost every audit that I've done has had an element of what you were describing. I have audited the Oregon Youth Authority. I have been in McLaren, I've been in Hillcrest. I was given a tour of McLaren by a group of what I thought were young state workers. Turns out, they were convicted killers. I had no idea. You know, and so the work that I do really requires developing an understanding of a program and an agency that I am about to make recommendations on how they can be more effective. And so, auditing the Youth Authority, I have audited Corrections. I've been within, you know, the walls of the state pen. I've seen how they separate the gangs, you know. There are, you know, we were doing a food service audit for, we were looking at the fraud that went on at Corrections within the food service program. But in order to really understand the nuances of the Department of Corrections and how they provide food to the inmates, we spent a considerable amount of time at the different correctional facilities. And so, seeing how they separate gang members within working conditions, you know, one gang affiliation works in, you know, the vegetable prep, the other gang affiliation works in the bakery. You know, and so really having to see that and understand that in order to make recommendations about a program. I've, let's see, others like that, you know, in different economic backgrounds. The, you know, the audit work that I've done, you know, it's, we're looking at the state as a whole, you know, so we're making recommendations that need to apply to eastern Oregon, western Oregon, you know, and central Oregon, and the coast, you know. And that experience over the last 10 years has really given me an insight into, you know, my community as a whole. But I would say probably most importantly is the work that I've done in the last year with the nonprofit organization, you know, providing birthday parties to homeless children. You know, I didn't know what the statistics were until we got involved. I had no idea. I had no idea how many children are living in homeless shelters, and those are just the ones lucky enough to live in a shelter. You know, we threw a birthday party at St. Francis Shelter yesterday. There were 30 kids there, you know, 30 in one shelter. And it was the most crazy, happy, exciting birthday party that you could ever imagine going to, because they, you know, they were so appreciative. So, you know, it's really important for me to be out in the community and to know what's going on and to make a difference, you know. And I do that through my audit work, and I do that through, and I will continue to do that through the nonprofit, so.
Counselor Clem?
I want to hug it, but I've just got to ask. And just a brief answer, we're facing cuts here. You've read about it in the paper. Not wanting to put you on the spot about where would you make cuts, or, but have you ever participated in a large governmental budget process where you weren't sort of keeping it flat or increasing it, but you were decreasing the budget, and it actually affected where you live? Just, have you ever done that? And if so, what was your brief experience?
Well, okay. Yes. Every audit that I do, particularly those right now that we're doing, we're really trying to focus on ways that, you know, we can help state agencies make those really tough decisions. Like I said, you know, going out and starting a performance audit of a program, we start with the budget, you know. And so, we are looking, we're looking back the past several years, you know, what was the budget situation? And we all know, you know, in the last 10 years, there have been significant changes. So, the performance audit work that I do, we're going out and we are looking to see, you know, how have, how have state agencies and programs managed that? You know, I did an audit just a couple of years ago of the cost of prescription drugs to the Medicaid program. You know, that in itself has, you know, has a large, has a large impact, you know. And so, we're looking at how, how an agency makes those tough decisions, and we are really focusing on that right now. We're doing, we're in the middle of doing a county financial condition assessment audit. You know, there are some counties in Oregon that are really struggling. And so, we are currently doing a performance audit, looking at how do they get, how do they, what are the ways to possibly get out of that? How did they get into that situation? How do we not fall into that again? So, I'm very acutely aware of, you know, the cuts that are being asked, you know, that we're asking state agencies and programs and counties and cities to make, you know. And I, quite frankly, I think that that's your, that's your biggest challenge right now, you know? How are you going to make those decisions? How are you going to make the smart decisions that not only balance the budget for this year and next year, but how are you going to continue to look forward to the future? You know, the decisions that you make about the budget the next two years will dramatically impact the next several years. You know, I'm doing an audit right now also where we're looking at the state's ability to bring business into the state, you know. So, decisions that cities and counties are making about how do we attract businesses, you know, things like that. What are we doing to further attract businesses to our community? So, you know, I understand you're making those tough calls, and I would certainly imagine that you are trying to balance, you know, the cuts you need to make today with how are we going to continue to prosper in the next 10 years? So, and I really, I think a priority needs to be, how do we continue to develop and grow business in this, you know, in the community? And, you know, and there are very specific things that you can do, so.
Well, with sustainability in mind, and being able to meet the needs of today without sacrificing the resources and the ability of the future to be able to meet those needs, I think that that's where we look at as far as budget issues and services and things that the city provides for the people that live here in Salem. As far as my experience with budgeting on a governmental level, pay my taxes. I have ability there as far as government budgeting. Yeah, well, you know, in previous jobs, I had to, we did representative pay accounting and things like this, but, you know, I don't really think that's what you're asking. But I can tell you from my, and this is a very recent, wonderful experience, my husband and I recently, we got the whole budget straightened out for our house, and for our child, and for our home, and everything. And having that budget organized with another person who doesn't always agree on where things should go, or, you know, a third person who is completely not able to have a say, but is dramatically impacted, we're able to meet the needs and also make those tough decisions, you know, are we going to do this, are we not going to do that? And I know it sounds funny, but I know that all families in Salem are going through it. You know, it's not just the city that's having this budget crunch, and I know you guys know that, because you have eyes and ears, and I'm sure you get phone calls and letters. It's something that's really close to me with my family, because we kind of wandered into where we were, and we're not wandering out of it. So, we're getting out of it, and we're, we have a clear path, and we've decided where we're going to go, and we're moving forward, and it's exciting. But that's a big-time budget experience for me, and we're very excited about it.
Well, I have a couple of questions. One is that if you've had an opportunity to observe this council or hear very much about us in the last year, I think that you would know that we've spent a lot of time and energy and devotion to our team building, and we do consider ourselves a team. We pull together, we work together. Could you each please describe for me, how would you become a member of this team? What things would you do to integrate and learn the council members and to become a part of the active work that we have in front of us every day?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very excited to be part of teams. I love being part of teams. I look forward to being part of teams. But one of the main reasons that I try and do that is by listening and being respectful of other people, making sure that I wait. That's something that's really kicked in these past few years, not being so quick to jump to conclusions, not being quick to easily offend, but being thoughtful in my interaction with others, and making sure that I have that time, and not being afraid to change my mind, or maybe take, take more time or ask more questions. I'm not afraid to approach people or talk with other people. I'm pretty verbal, so in my job, I like to interact with people, see how they're doing, find out about them, and find out about what's going on in their lives, so that I have information to be able to see how we have something in common, or see what we can do.
Thank you.
Just real quick, the audit work that I do, it is in the form of teams. So, we work in teams, and we go out and we, again, we evaluate an agency program, and, you know, we are all, all of us have master's degrees, and we all think, you know, we know it all. And so, you know, but we work very effectively together, and we work very quickly together. You know, we are, we're tasked with some very unusual audit topics sometimes, you know, and we have to get in and gain an understanding of an agency and a program, and do that in a, you know, in it as a team. And then we have to come back, and we have to decide as a team, you know, what do we know? What recommendations are we making that are going to have a dramatic impact on the lives of, you know, of a lot of, a lot of people in Oregon? So, I have, you know, a lot of experience working very collaboratively in a team environment, and again, on a, on two separate boards. As far as the City Council goes, though, I am very excited about the potential of working with this team. I, you know, I've done, done my background research on the council, and, you know, I'm familiar with your backgrounds, and it's very exciting that you're, you know, you're all very diverse, you know, but you have come together. And I have, you know, I am aware of the decisions that you've made, and I have watched you. And quite frankly, I've, I think I've seen a difference, you know. So, whatever it is you've done, seems to be, seems to be working. The way that I would integrate myself into the council is, you know, I know that you're all very busy, but I would want to, I would want to meet each one of you, you know, at least have lunch to start out, so I can, you know, I can talk to you and learn more about you, more about your ward, more about your perspective, your goals for the City Council. You know, I know that you have, you know, you've published goals out there, but what are your individual goals and priorities and preferences? I would also like, I know it would just be for a year, but I would like to find a mentor, you know, on the City Council. So, you know, I think that that works really well. Certainly, again, you know, not a mentor that I would take up a lot of somebody's time, you know, I'm a quick-study, quick learner, but I think that that's, you know, that's a good way to get, start to get integrated, and, you know, and just get to know each of you a little better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other further questions from counselors? Counselor Tesler?
I have to say this, I've been audited twice by these people, and passed both times. But I will give you a public compliment and say that your auditors did a great job, and I was very appreciative of that. But always keep good records.
Well, thank you for the public compliment. We greatly appreciate, a lot of times, we are underappreciated.
Thank you both very much for the interview time and for your thoughtful answers to our questions, and for being citizens who would want to contribute to the community as much as you know that this position would require. So, thank you very much. All right, we have ballots in front of us, counselors, and we have ballots, they're marked one, two, and three. So, we'll see where we get on the first ballot, and...
Just one comment before you vote. The Charter does require a majority of the council, so that means you'll have to have five votes to appoint. It's not a majority of the quorum, it's a majority of the council. So, the Charter under Section 20 and Section 18 are very clear that it'll have to be five votes.
Okay.
Don't forget mine. Oh, yeah.
And Ms. Blassey received five votes.
Congratulations. Welcome to the Salem City Council. And thank you very much, Sally Cook, for coming and being a part of this selection process. And also I want to say a personal thank you to what you're doing for the community garden in your, in your neighborhood. That's how we first met, talking about the garden. And it's been very, very wonderful to watch how you've organized that and how you're bringing that forward, so. We expect to see you here again and again.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are many other ways that you can serve the city, Ms. Cook. We have many openings on our boards and committees. Please do look into that.
I, I understand that you will be sworn in officially at the beginning of our next meeting. Does that mean that she would not be able to come to the Budget Committee meeting Wednesday?
Well, technically, she can be sworn in at any time.
Oh.
I don't, I don't have the oath here tonight, or I would swear in tonight. She can actually come by my office. It doesn't have to occur in public.
Oh, but a public swearing in is so nice.
I could do it at the Budget Committee meeting.
Counselor Tesler? Yeah?
What do you want to do? You're the person that has to do it.
I would like to be involved in the budget process, the upcoming budget process, so whatever I would need to do to be involved in that, so. So if that involves being sworn in now, I'm more than, more than willing to do that, so that I could be involved in that.
Could we do that at the beginning of the Budget Committee meeting?
We'd do that.
On Wednesday evening?
Right.
All right. Does that work for you?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I see no other business to come before our council this evening, so the meeting is adjourned.